Good, thanks.
Okay.
Did you get the email about the Audit Committee meeting? Yeah, so maybe I haven't seen it.
Good evening and welcome. Today is Monday, May 7, 2018. This is a special meeting and workshop of the Board of Education. If we could begin this evening, please with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. We have just convened from executive session. We have adjourned from that. We will not be returning. And we are going to start this evening. We have a little bit of business of the Board, and then we're going to go into two presentations this evening. One is on our budget presentation and public hearing, and the next is on an update of our strategic plan. Our administrators and teachers are here tonight to share in that. So if we could begin, please, with business of the Board. One, approve a stipulation of agreement. Resolved at the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby ratifies and approves the stipulation of agreement between the district and employee number 27, dated May 7, 2018, and hereby authorizes the superintendent of schools to execute all documents pertaining to same and to take all actions consistent with the terms thereof. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Rob, discussion. All in favor? Number two, accept a resignation. Resolved at the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby accepts the resignation of Edward Calderon from employment with the district for the purpose of retirement effective June 22, 2018. Is there a motion? Cynthia, second. Pete, discussion.
I just want to thank Mr. Calderon for 15 years of service to our district. He has kept us safe up here at the middle high school for many, many long years, and we wish him well in retirement.
All in favor? Number three, accept a resignation. Resolved to accept the resignation of Danielle Smith as a special education teacher effective June 30, 2018. Is there a motion? Cynthia, second. Pete, discussion. All in favor? Number four, approve a termination. Resolved at the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District, having reviewed and considered the superintendent's recommendation that Christina Saraphin be denied tenure, hereby accepts such recommendation and terminates the employment of Christina Saraphin effective June 30, 2018. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Second. Rob, discussion. All in favor? Number five, approve a multi-year contract. Whereas the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District desires to enter into a five-year service contract with Southern Westchester Board of Cooperative Educational Services pursuant to Education Law 19504-JJ in order for the Lower Hudson Regional Information Center to furnish certain services to the district, including, not limited to, network printing services in COSER 6360 or COSER 7710. Now, therefore, it is resolved that the Board of Education of the district agrees to a multi-year contract with Southern Westchester BOSI's for the provision of said services to the district at a cost not to exceed over the term of the agreement of $354,027 plus yearly RIC support during the term of this contract. This amount may be amended with the approval of both parties. Payment will be made as part of the regular annual BOSI's contract for services. The superintendent of schools or designee is hereby authorized to approve the final terms of the contract and to execute on behalf of the district all documents necessary or appropriate to carry out the intent of this resolution. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Cynthia, discussion.
I'd like to ask Ms. Lou just to explain this. It's an opportunity to get better equipment and save some service cost in the process.
Yeah, this is a resolution to combine two leases that we have with BOSI's for our copiers. To combine them into one lease, we will be able to replace all 11 of the copiers in the district with new machines, as well as sign up for a new service agreement, and we'll save about $20,000 a year to the district, and we'll have new machines as well. So I recommend going forward with this lease arrangement with BOSI's.
All in favor? Okay, so that concludes the business of the Board for this evening, and we are going to now move on to the workshop presentations. First, Lee, with the budget presentation.
This is the final budget presentation. Our budget vote is next Tuesday, and this is a required budget presentation that we will look at the Board of Education's adopted budget. Just to quickly review, we've seen this slide before. This is the same slide as the Board adopted the budget. We are looking at a budget next year proposed at $34,25,550, and that's an increase of 4.69 percent. As you can see, the bulk of the increases were in instruction and in other areas to provide for one-time purchases for security and services and improvements to the district for next year. The Board of Education added two security monitors to the budget, as well as additional classroom renovations and refurbishments and other renovations to the district that we can take care of in advance of the capital project coming on board. As you know, we are subject to the tax levy cap that is provided for us by New York State. It's a complicated, multi-step formula with ins and outs that come down to a conclusion of our maximum allowable tax levy increase for next year would be 3.49 percent. So it's a misnomer. Again, to think of it as a 2 percent tax cap, that just includes the factor for inflation. The district is also permitted different factors, for example, the tax base growth factor, which counts for growth of brick-and-mortar growth in the district, as well as various exclusions and inclusions to come up with the formula of total of 3.49 percent. However, we're proposing to only increase the tax levy by 2.98 percent. That keeps us within our maximum allowable of 3.49 percent. Our revenue budget then shows the tax levy increase of the 2.98 percent, as well as various other areas where we are seeing some additional revenues, particularly about $100,000 in state aid for next year, as well as some increased revenues for tuitions that other parents and other districts pay into the district to send their students to Tuckahoe, as well as we are increasing the appropriated fund balance next year to balance the budget. I just want to clarify and reiterate that the property tax credit relief program that began in 2016 and is being fully phased in, it reduces the tax burden to the qualifying homeowners in the district, and if eligible for that credit, meaning you live in the district and you have an income of under $275,000, and you've paid property taxes in the prior year, and you receive basic or enhanced star, because our tax levy increase of 2.98 percent is under the maximum, the district is in compliance, and the homeowners will receive their property tax rebate. Also, if you take a look at the five-year history of our taxes and our budget, you can see our tax levy over five years has fluctuated based on the cap limitations that were provided for by the state. But overall, on a five-year average, we are below the 2 percent. In addition, we are also below the 2 percent in budget increases. We've fluctuated from year to year, but, and this year particularly, we're looking at some one-time increases, but overall, we've managed to remain under, on average, under 2 percent. Graphically, if you take a look at it, the line on top shows how our enrollment has been increasing over the last few years. However, in some years, you can see that the bars represent our budget change, as well as our tax levy change. Those have been quite low over the past few years, so this year is just a one-year addition to the budget so that we can take care of some one-time expenses, as well as to provide for increases for enrollment growth. We still don't know for next year many factors when we prepare a budget, such as how many tax certiori petitions and judgments may come in for the district, as well as the exact staffing levels that will be required, depending on enrollment and other issues and mandates that were provided for by the state. I want to remind everyone that next Tuesday, May 15, is the budget vote and also the trustee election, and that's from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Please come out to vote in either District A or District B. The information is on the website, and you can review that if you need to, or call our district clerk's office if you need more information. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Of course, when it comes to the budget, you know, I always have something to say. Okay, again, I think it's very interesting to say that tonight, while we're going over our strategic plan under finance, one thing that we have said over and over is that we will stay within the allowable tax cap, and this budget does do that. So I thank you, Lee, for preparing a budget that stays within the tax cap and really fulfills what we've been working on and what we've promised to do as a district. So thank you for that. If, Lee, if you could come up just a little bit and talk about what, you know, we never want to think this way, but what would happen if the budget does not pass? Because I think that's something that we don't like to talk about, but something very important for the community to hear.
Sure. So if the budget does not pass on May 15, the Board of Education has the option to either put up the same budget for another vote, put up a different budget for another vote, or go straight to a contingency budget. If there's another budget put up for vote, and that one does not pass, then the district automatically goes to a contingency budget, and a contingency budget would require that we eliminate the entire tax levy increase, which would mean eliminating $807,000 from our budget. We can't eliminate contractual obligations, so we would only be able to eliminate, most likely, the cuts would come from program and other areas that were permitted by law to eliminate if we had to. And that would be the, and the votes would be a month apart, so we would have the opportunity to vote twice or vote once more, one more time, but contingency means a reduction of $807,000.
Okay. Thank you for that. And again, it's not something that we want to talk about, but I think it is very important. Cuts in the amount of $800,000 would set this district back tremendously and all the progress that we have made over the years. So I think it's very important for when our voters go into, to vote on May 15, that they take that into consideration. So thank you for that. Was there anything else that you wanted to add to that?
No, not budget-related, but I'll do a quick intro. We have an administrator group here this evening, as well as a teacher group, and we appreciate you giving your time to join us. You may or may not know that the district is at the end of a five-year strategic plan, and that plan is, will be completed by the end of June, and the district will be, over the summer and into the fall, working on a follow-up needs assessment and a follow-up five-year strategic plan. So we're rounding out some very exciting initiatives, and tonight, we have six different topics that our teachers and administrators will be presenting on. And to kick that off, I'd like to invite Dr. McDonnell up to the podium, and she'll do introductions.
Thank you, Mr. Albano. We are excited to share some things that have been happening over the district this year. As Mr. Albano said, this is year five of our five-year plan, and we wanted to focus on some things that we've been doing that we realized as we come near the end of this plan that are crossing over some of the original defined sections. So what you're going to see tonight are things that, from the secondary schools, we're going to actually work on some elementary things next week, so we're here to show you some things happening in our secondary schools that go over three of these bands: teaching and learning, student special needs and talents, and student life growth and development are the three biggest buckets that you'll hear people present. Some teachers are here to present to you, some administrators. Got some really exciting initiatives that we want to make sure both the Board and the community hear about, that the staff and the students have been very busy on. So we are going to start with the concept of visual literacy, and Mr. Burnett, our middle school principal.
Thank you, Dr. McDonnell. I'm going to have one of our middle school English teachers, Ms. Kate Rogan, is going to join me for this presentation as well. And before we jump into this, I just want to give a little intro to the first three topics that we're going to be discussing tonight: visual literacy, the writing revolution, and flipped classrooms. These are three examples of different teaching techniques that we're implementing in the classrooms, but I want to make sure that the audience understands that these are one tool that we're adding, so to speak, to the toolkit of instructional strategies that we have. So when we walk you through visual literacy, I want you to understand that we use this to enhance instruction, to enhance understanding, but that we use this occasionally, not all of the time. And we're going to highlight some of the work that we've done in these three areas. So Kate Rogan is here with me, and thank you, Kate, for joining me tonight. First, a little bit about visual literacy. What is it? You don't need me to tell you that if you log on to any website or open up your phone, the visual and the written mediums are converging, and you see that on the homepage of the New York Times every day, where you can get headlines by reading them or by clicking on videos and watching what has just happened. So visual literacy is the way that we describe our ability to communicate, both in the written medium, but also in the visual and audio mediums as well. And the reason that we think that this is important is because the skills are preparing our students to communicate in the future, both professionally and in their academic lives. Excuse me. An added benefit of the visual literacy curriculum is that it allows students to access information through the visual media, which enhances their ability to articulate literacy and its components. What we see is kids become more engaged, they become more interested, and rather than just sort of visualizing what they're reading, they can actually see what they're reading, and that allows them to do more descriptive work and more understanding. What we're doing is we're aligning skills. We're aligning the work that happens in the visual world, the understanding that happens in the visual world, and the work that we do in the written world in our literacy classes. Implementation at the high school and at the middle school, and I should say that this has really been front-loaded by the high school, and they've done just fantastic work with Jacob Burns, with the Film Center, and then bringing us into the work along with them. So Kate Rogan has been part of the growth of the program. But through Jacob Burns, we've sent teachers to training in the summer. Jacob Burns has sent consultants to our school to work with us here at school. And the components that tie into the curriculum with our technology, our computers, the suite of applications through Google, all of that, we've gotten help from our consultant teachers, James Moore and Kathy Mosher, who have spent countless hours working with our teachers, helping them to make sure all of the, all of the work that they're doing goes as planned. So Kate is going to actually walk us through one of the program, one of the projects that they do in the seventh grade, so I'll favor you.
So in seventh grade, my students were just finishing up a short story unit on nonlinear plots, so they looked at different plot structures that didn't follow a typical chronological order, and that meant jumping forward and backward throughout time, so learning about flash-forwards and looking at flashbacks. One of the projects for Jacob Burns is an image project. So my students were asked to take five pictures that told a story. Four of those pictures were in the present moment, and the last picture was a flashback picture, which filled in information for the viewer, and kind of resolved a conflict for our viewers as well. In doing the flashback project, the students could kind of see their story come to life. So this is one student started with a storyboard, and in order to start visual literacy, often we sketch out different shot types. So they learned about wide shots, medium shots, and close-up shots. This student in particular had a room, took a photo of a room destroyed by a puppy, and then took a medium shot of that puppy in the room, so kind of zoom in a little bit, and it's character interaction, a medium shot. There's a close-up of the puppy's sad eyes, because he's in trouble, and a close-up of a person wagging their finger at the dog. And the last image is a flashback, and the flashback shows an open puppy gate, and it resolves the conflict as to why that puppy was in so much trouble in the first place. So I'll show a short video clip. So after our students were able to visually represent the story, they then, obviously, being in English class, had to write about it, so they needed to analyze the shot types, talk about their story from start to finish, and talk about how the visual literacy project enhanced their understanding of a nonlinear plot. Next, I'm sorry. Currently, my students are working on a quarter-four student choice reading project, and that involves a leitmotif, which is a musical phrase or a theme song. So they each are reading an independent novel, and for their last project, like typical of thinking when a bride walks down the aisle, before you see that bride and you hear the music, you know who's walking down the aisle. Same with Jaws or Darth Vader. They'll be creating their own theme song for the character or protagonist in their novel, and in doing so, they have to really understand their character, and that means understanding the character traits of that character, being able to know their emotional state of the character, and being able to really understand the attributes that define that character. So they'll be creating a musical theme song that goes, that connects with their protagonist, and then on top of doing that, we'll obviously be doing a writing piece to support the leitmotif that they'll be doing for this project. So that's kind of a start as to where we are in seventh grade right now for visual literacy, but the students are having a great time with it, so it's been a lot of fun. Thank you. I'm going to introduce Kristen Vincenzi. She is the high school English teacher using visual literacy as well.
Between Chromebooks, I'll do the clicker. I guess I should have had a practice session. Oh, there it is. I might go on to four. Okay. Thank you. Sorry. Okay, so I'm going to discuss what I did with my freshmen with the visual literacy project and Romeo and Juliet by William Shakespeare. So we work a lot with the modern-day version of the film with Romeo and Juliet, so what better to use the visual literacy with that as well? That's not mine. Okay, so following up with what Kate does in seventh grade, we do also, we did a shot type with the ninth grade, except it's a little bit more in-depth. So the close-up, we first teach about how when you shoot a close-up, it's for emotional purposes, to get the character's feeling. Medium is for, to show character interaction, and then you take a wide shot to show setting. So I gave them a bunch of different scene choices, and this is really where their critical thinking still, skills came in, getting to better understand the text with Romeo and Juliet, because if you see each section that they got, and they got more scenes than this to choose from, but, for example, the fight scene, it's from lines 1 to 75. They're only allowed to use six quotes for their storyboard, so they really have to take into consideration, out of those 75 lines, what six quotes are the best to use, not only to understand the text the best way possible for the scene, but also to follow up with the shot types. So first, okay. So the first thing that they did along with, and as you could see, you could see, which is kind of good for you guys, the growth from a middle school storyboard in seventh grade to a ninth grade storyboard. We do six shot types. I tried to make sure they did a variety of medium, wide, and close-ups. So for the first shot type, it's a wide shot type. They wanted to show the ballroom in Romeo and Juliet and how everybody was attending the ball. And I really tried to emphasize with them, it's not an art project, this is almost like a draft. If you were writing a paper, you just want to kind of get your ideas down on paper. So they did the ballroom, and then they had to put down the quote that came with the ballroom scene. And then next, they want to do a close-up, they want to show that Tybalt is angry because he hears that Romeo's at the party, a Montague. And then they go into a medium shot, because Tybalt goes to tell Capulet that he is not happy that Romeo is at the party. And then they continue on with another close-up, another wide, and then they wanted to show the empty ballroom at the end. So it's the scene from beginning to end, to show the scene, those shot types, but also to get an idea of the context of the play. So here are some examples. So they wanted to do a wide shot. This is one project on the left side, they did the fight scene, so they wanted a wide shot of the fight scene, so that shows setting. Now, what was interesting about this was that the student that was taking the picture knew that they had to climb up all the way to get that wide shot in, to get that shot, and show that the Capulets and the Montagues were fighting. And then they have their quote that matches their scene. On the right-hand side is a different, it's from a different project, from a different group of kids. Again, another setting, they wanted to show that the ballroom was empty in Romeo and Juliet, so they took a shot of the empty auditorium. Close-ups, and these are not in order, these are just to show the different shot types, but close-ups, Ben Volio wants peace, right? He's a character that always wants peace in Romeo and Juliet, and Tybalt on the right is, again, angry, as you can see, that Romeo's at the party. And then you have your character interactions. So in the first one, you have your medium shot, because it's, do you bite your thumb at us, sir? Are you, do you want to fight? Are you trying to fight us? And then on the right-hand side, it's, we got to do something, Romeo's here at the party, but Capulet wants no part of it from Tybalt. And then this is what they produced as a final copy, so they have their shot types, they printed them out, they put them on their poster board, they act the scene, and the quote, the six important quotes that match the context of the play, get the general idea of what's going on in the scene, and then also match the shot type. And then that's the other final copy. And then, Dr. Lindham?
I thought we conclude the visual literacy segment with some highlights of what's going on in the upper grades. Here's grade 10 and 11. Ms. Moy is also working on visual literacy at the high school, but this is Diarcos' class. And here's the assignment. So they pick a book that they're interested in, a student choice book, and with that book, they read it, obviously, and then they do a personal narrative college essay based upon the book. And the college essay is the protagonist or a minor character in the book applying to college. So obviously, if the protagonist is going to apply to college, he better know what the book was about. Step three, you create a digital central idea essay based upon the Common Core ELA Regions criteria with a specific measurable standard. So we're back to the Common Core, but it's a digital essay. And step four, you present the digital essay to the class, incorporating all the literary elements with the standard there of a rubric. So basically, they comply with literary elements, the visual elements, and the presentation. And I'll take you through that right now, just a sample of a presentation. This was done by Mahia Alaplana, a 10th grade student, and she picked the book Girl Boss. So not only did she learn about literary elements, but she also learned about the world of work and business leadership. The author of this book is worth about $243 million, last I checked, so.
Before and after, she decided to change, in addition to showing the methods to use in order to improve her lifestyle. The black and white pictures were used to show the main character's past, while the colored pictures represent the main character's current lifestyle. The eBay store is a symbol used to show how the main character improved her lifestyle. The O-D-O I chose starts off as low but ends in a high note, just like the main character's journey. This movie was the unhealthy lifestyle the main character lived, and she was able to overcome this conflict by deciding to improve her lifestyle. Central idea of this film is that it is never too late to change, and that hidden inside each failure is a key to success.
This was Mahia's, and the student's first attempt at visual production, so they're outstanding.[1800.32] outstanding. I saw this in the beginning of the spring, and credit to her and other students there in Mr. Diarcos' class. So concluding on visual literacy, as Mark Barnett pointed out, it's a critical component. We're in a visual world today that is really superseding the written text. So our job is really to merge them and make our students critical thinkers in both the written and the visual medium. Moving on to the writing revolution, this is a program we brought in about two and a half years ago, and it's really critical thinking through the process of writing. I will take you through the why and the success of it, and Kate and Kristin will take you through the, what they're exactly doing, so you get an understanding of it. But we brought this in, the administrators brought this in basically because it teaches the mechanics of writing within the subject content. It also forces thinking, so as you do the process of the writing revolution, it forces the students to expand their thinking in that specific content. And as students engage, they begin to understand writing from a structural approach, but also improving their content area knowledge. And as they progress along in the program, they become more in-depth thinkers and writers. Why has it been successful? We all know that a system in place really makes more efficient writers. Without a system, it's really a hodgepodge. Also, with the university, the university level, training teachers coming out of colleges and universities, there's been a dearth of good teacher ed programs in the teaching of writing. As I mentioned before, the writing revolution is used in all content areas. Just in the past week, I've seen it in Italian, chemistry, social studies, and of course, the English teachers will be following me. It's differentiated. It facilitates writing and thinking at all levels. The most challenged students and also the most gifted students can employ it. And as Kate and Kristin will take you through there, you can do it in a tiered approach, and it's done on all grades in a tiered approach, not just a specific grade, by sentence, by paragraph, by essay. And Kristin will show you outline and note-taking, which is also done at the middle school, and for a research paper. So last point is, it can get students involved in their interest of thinking. The writing revolution is also used in our student choice reading program. So it's not just basically the curriculum, but also what students are interested in. Would you like to bring Kate back up now, just to highlight what's going on at the middle school?
So at the middle school, one of the key components of the writing revolution is that it starts at the sentence level. So the goal is, by starting at the sentence level, students are constructing really sophisticated sentences. And that could be coming in and doing a quick do-now, an exit ticket, it could be a longer piece of writing, but essentially, if you start at the sentence level and you have a strong foundation, students have better comprehension of text, they're teaching, we're teaching grammar and mechanics, but actually through instruction and content, we're laying the groundwork for revising and editing, and it encourages close reading. So when we start at the sentence level and students begin to become comfortable creating sophisticated sentences, they then go on to do actual work that leads to a final essay. And these are just two small examples of something that they would do at a sentence level. But when an essay is started in a class, it could be a week's process of sentence-level work, getting students prepared. On the left, it's introducing topic sentences, and students are writing their own topic sentences based on ideas, and then converting those topic sentences into keywords and phrases, which is something that's used in note-taking. On the right-hand side, students are working on an introduction, which follows a general statement, a specific statement, and a thesis statement. They initially take three sentences, and they have to organize the sentences by general statement, specific statement, and thesis statement. They then work to write their own general statement, and ultimately, they end up writing their own introduction paragraph on their own. So it's very scaffolded. They start with just reorganizing, then slowly, they're writing their own statements, and then ultimately, they're writing their own introduction. These are two examples of sentence-level work. Ultimately, there would probably be eight or nine leading to an actual essay. And the goal is then, when a student goes to write the final essay, they're held accountable for using those sentence structures that have been practiced at the sentence level. In this particular essay, this student was able to embed participial phrases, which are complex sentences, sophisticated vocabulary words, subordinate clauses, which are complex sentences, and a positive phrases. Not only are they using them in their actual essay, but they're required to then identify the sentence types that they have ended up using. And in this particular student, even color-coded them so that I can see that they're using them, which is great. And this would be a final result. So they start at the sentence level, become very, very comfortable with the sentence-level structures, and then they end up embedding them into their actual final essay. Writing revolution is also really beneficial with reading comprehension. In sixth grade, it's really helped with metacognition, or the awareness of one's thought process. So this particular student was asked to identify what a vocabulary word meant using context clues from a sentence, and the student was not just had, didn't have to just circle, the answer was A. They needed to explain why they chose the answer they chose. And having used the writing revolution, the student was aware that however was a change-of-direction transition word, and was able to link two sentences together, which essentially helped them determine the correct definition for panacea. So this writing strategy and the writing strategies they're using in class, especially for transitions here, has really supported students' reading comprehension skills and awareness of their own thought process.
Okay, so once again, following Kate, I'm going to go into what we do in high school. I worked on an interdisciplinary research paper with science, with Mr. Trehe, and English we did it together. This is also, it follows the same kind of guidelines that the social studies department also does with the English department, junior year, with a research paper. So what you're about to see, there are a bunch of skills, as you saw Kate was presenting, all the skills that went into sentence work. This is how it kind of all comes together. So you're going to see what all those skills kind of produce in the end. So first is our note-taking skills. So because this is a research paper, they got note-taking sheets, and each sheet had to be on whatever their source was, was presented on the source. So this is one source. And all our sources that the students use come from, with the help of our media specialist, Evelyn Johnson, and her library webpage and her sources. She kind of helps and guides us with all that, with the research. So they find their sources. On the left-hand side, you'll see they have to put the page and the paragraph of the source, of where they're getting the information from. In the middle is the paragraph for the essay, which paragraph in the essay it's going to go in. And then you'll see on the right-hand side is all the information, and you see your note-taking skills. So they have their abbreviations, they have their symbols, and this is really just to help with their note-taking and to get their research down. Then we turn into a multi-paragraph outline. Now, I'm only showing you part of the multi-paragraph outline, because there's five paragraphs. So I just kind of honed in right here on their third paragraph, which is diagnosis and treatment. And again, this is one section of the multi-paragraph outline. So on the right-hand side, you'll see, from before, where we had all those note-taking skills, that was broken up by source, they now look and say, okay, I'm going to go down to paragraph three, that's the information that I know I need to put over here in my diagnosis and my treatment. And I know what source I got it from. And then on the left-hand side is the topic sentence, they find their quote from their source, and then where they got it from. And that's a topic sentence, is another skill that Kate touched upon, that she worked on, and this is where it comes into play. With the multi-paragraph outline, when they're done filling out all their details, we then go into their introduction. So introduction follows the GST template, so general statement, specific statement, thesis statement. That's all stuff that's pre-taught in the classroom. Once they produce a draft, we also need to focus on revise and editing. So they produce a draft, and they did a peer edit. So, and I actually focused on this in particular to follow what Kate was doing, this is all sentence work. So when they're peer editing someone else's essay, they have to say, are there different types of sentences used? Did they combine their sentences? Do they need to expand on their sentences? Did they use transition words? So they not only need to answer, but they need to have an explanation. Yes, they use different sentence types. These are the sentence types they use. Yes, they use transition words. These are the transition words they use. And the main part of this is to, to be self-aware of their own essay, so that when they go back to write their final copy, they see, and they're self-aware, like, oh, I remember this person didn't do this, did I do that? Because if I gave, you know, something, if I gave this to them to do on their own essay, they might fly by it. But knowing that they're doing it for something else, it might take a little bit more care into it. And then this is our final copy produced, and I just highlighted some transition words in there that this particular student put in. Obviously, this is one part of the research paper, but just to show you what the final result and all those skills that go into it. Okay? And I think it's Mr. DeBellas?
Good evening, everyone. Kind of on the heels of what Mr. Barnett started talking about, a few months back, we were here as administrative team, and we were talking about the different type of innovative pedagogical strategies that we hope to implement inside of the classroom. And one that I'm going to talk about today is new to the middle school. It's not new to the high school, especially to one of our seasoned veterans, Mrs. Joanne Ornstein. I wanted to just thank and acknowledge her for all of her leadership and collaboration, and for extending the bridge that the high school has had for some time, and bringing it over to the middle school. And I think that, you know, one of the best ways for professionals to learn is from other professionals. And I also want to acknowledge Ms. Sarah, who I'll invite up here in a moment, but her willingness to grow professionally. And I spoke with her and asked her if she would be willing to try something new and try something different. And as an educator, when you try something, you have twenty, twenty-five audience members that'll let you know if it didn't go very well. And she said absolutely, and she took it, she worked with Ms. Ornstein on her own, and from what I went in to observe, I thought it was an outstanding lesson. So what is a flipped classroom? I like to think of a flipped classroom or a flipped lesson as kind of like my favorite meal. The dessert comes first, and then we eat the rest of the meal. So the traditional way of teaching is that a teacher will have a do-now, they'll deliver a lesson, they'll deliver content, and then students will have time to practice, teacher will assess, and then be able to give feedback, also sometimes following up with homework. This is a little bit different now, because the student's homework is to view the lesson the night before. So I think that it gives a student a tremendous amount of advantages. I think, like everyone spoke about with the visual technology, our students are visual learners, and we're learning more and more as educators, that when we can spark them visually, that it clicks and they grasp it a lot deeper than they do in the traditional ways that we learnt. Students are able to see the presentation, and I think it also gives them a time to process that information. Sometimes when students are in class, they don't want to ask a question. They're afraid or they're intimidated to really say that they don't understand. But students are now able to watch this lesson on their own, and they're able to now go at their own pace. During the lesson, Ms. Sarah or whatever teacher is also able to spend a tremendous amount more time allowing those students to practice. And I think math being a subject that students struggle with and that they find challenging, this is now an opportunity to build repetition and to also build confidence as they move on. Again, as Dr. Linahan talked about, this is fully differentiated, meaning that every student from the highest and from the lowest level is able to gain access. Again, I think having that time overnight to process also gives them that confidence to be successful in math. And it also allows students to prepare questions. I think they have time to sit and think about it, they can review it, they can rewind it, they can go as fast as they want, and they don't have to think of a question within ten seconds, which I know is difficult for adults, not even just for students. So there's a lot of different benefits to it. I'm going to invite Ms. Sarah up to talk a little bit more about one of the lessons.
Thank you, Mr. DeBellas. Hello. I'd like to start by saying how grateful I am to Joanne. Obviously, as Mr. DeBellas said, she's already implemented the flipped classroom in her room, and now she's been a wonderful mentor for me to implement it in mine as well. So when the students log into Google Classroom, this is a screenshot of what they will see. We go over, I'll discuss what our aim is in this particular lesson. We are solving and graphing inequalities using the multiplication and division properties of equality. And so this is what they're seeing at home. They get to click on this. Now, next is a intro, a little video, a little clip of what they're going to be watching. The whole by four, so the whole by four. Then twenty-one. Okay? What is negative one hundred divided by negative four? Well, that's a positive twenty-five. Is forty-five less than twenty-one? No, it is not. Well, the check didn't work. What can I do to this inequality to make it true then? Well, let's try flipping that inequality and see if this is true. K is greater than negative eighty-four. Okay? Let's try that instead. So let's recheck here. Okay. So obviously, here I am showing them how, when you multiply or divide by a negative number on both sides of the inequality, you have to flip the inequality in order to make the inequality true. So even still at home, I'm creating a lesson where they can see, obviously, using their prior knowledge of solving problems like this, they, and using the check by seeing if what they did was correct, they're going to see that there's going to be something a little different with a problem that looks like this. So right after this, I will complete that problem, then I will do it again with the division property of equality to show it, on the other hand, with division and multiplication, of course. And then we come to a key concept. When you multiply or divide both sides of an inequality by a negative number, the inequality symbol must be reversed or flipped to keep the inequality true. So the following day, what it looks like, they have a do-now from a previous lesson, usually jogging their prior knowledge. They have a quick review of what they've learned on a video, but it's going to be a student-led discussion based on what they've learned on the video. And they'll get excited, too, because they come in and they're like, oh, yeah, yeah, I saw that, I saw that. So that's always really, it's nice and it's exciting for them, and definitely intrinsically motivates them. Then we'll do a guided problem together, and it leaves me a lot more time to answer any and all questions. When we do that guided problem, it jogs their memory of what they learned the night before, and it brings up the questions that they had from the night before, which is great. And finally, the students are paired, and they're placed into groups, and they are able to practice the material. You know, these lessons, as Mr. DeBellas mentioned, definitely create an environment in the classroom that provides students with a lot more time to practice, and it gives me a lot more opportunity to help them individually. So, and they stay engaged. Thank you.
And again, just to kind of reiterate from the lesson that I had went into C, I was shocked by how much time the students actually were working on the problems. Their attention and their focus, and them working together as small groups, it was motivating, I got to say. Thank you, Ms. Sarah. So let's switch hats a little bit, and let's talk about our senior internship program. Academically, I think every educator and parent and community member knows is extremely important, but there's also a social and emotional component of growth and development that is critical. This internship program was reinstated back in the spring of 2017, and I'd just like to say thank you to the members of the board, Mr. Albano, Dr. Linahan, Mr. Calaswano, for all of his initiative and all of his leadership, and I'll be bringing him up in a moment, as well as the Tocco High School faculty and staff for all of their support. It takes a lot of components working together and also being on the same page in order to make a program like this work successfully. So thank you to everyone. Basically, students are in a structured work environment, but one of the differences to me is that they're being supervised by trained professionals in their field. There are a number of professions that require internship. Educators are an example. Apprenticeships, electricians are an example. We feel as though, in order for someone to truly grasp all of the content knowledge that they've learned in a classroom, they have to be able to apply that knowledge. And I think the internship is a fantastic way for them to be able to do that. Students are able to look at career options before a college commitment, which has a significant financial commitment that goes along with it as well. So students are able to spend about six weeks exploring something that they think they would like to go into. Now, they might learn that it's great and they love it and they want to pursue it further, or they might realize it's not for them. This is a great opportunity for them to spend some time and do that before they even walk out the door as high school seniors. Students can set their own personal learning goals and address lack of experience. I think lack of experience is the number-one issue that employers say they have difficulty. How do you gain experience? If you've never worked in a field before, it's very difficult to gain professional experience. Internship is a fantastic way to do that, and it helps students put things on their resume that they can bring with them into college and then also into their career. Provide students with an opportunity to apply the knowledge in the classroom. Again, and I'll just reiterate, when you learn something, I know as an educator, we sat through classes for two years, it wasn't until you got into your student teaching moment, that all of a sudden, you found out whether or not you were able to take all of that educational theory and apply it into real-world situations. And I think that every profession has their own nuances, has their own unique set of circumstances, that students are going to be able to take that knowledge and also now solve problems. now solve problems and do it in the real world. Brigham Young University cited a study that said students make about $2,440 more on average for their salary. That was coming out of college with internship experience. Our students are doing it coming out of high school. So I'm thinking that that number is going to be even a little bit higher. I'm going to call Brigham Young, ask them to do a study for us. We'll see what they say. And it also motivates students to complete graduation requirements early. Students are not able to walk out of the door until every single one of their graduation requirements are completed, including Regents exams, AP exams, so all their testing, all of their academic coursework has to be completed. They must be conscientious as they're going through the year. Today was our first day that we released, I think it was about 16 seniors, and they were now out onto their internships. So I think it gives them something to work towards the end of their high school career as well, and it's something that they're going to carry with them forever. So at this time, I'd like to invite up Mr. Calaswano and ask him to speak a little bit more about it.
Good evening, everyone. I also would like to reiterate thanks to the board, Mr. Albano, Dr. Linehan, Mr. DeBellas for their support in the reinstatement of this program. When the wheels started turning with this, one thing that I knew was how powerful this program could be, having participated myself in this program as a high school student. And what we created here was a very comprehensive program that the students must take pre-steps, so before they even reach the requirements of the actual program, they must participate in pre-steps such as submitting an application, submitting a resume, completing all of their academic requirements. So they must take final exams, their AP exams all must be completed. Every current teacher signs off on them before they are allowed to leave this building. Once they do begin the internship portion, some of the requirements that we do have the students complete is they must commit 25 hours to their internship site, which they create the hours with their site sponsor. From there, they must meet weekly with their Tocco High School faculty mentor. So every single student must have a mentor. It can be any faculty, staff member in the high school that they will meet with weekly once their internship experience begins, basically to talk about what's going on, how they're liking their experience, et cetera. From there, they must maintain accurate timesheets, so both with their mentor and their site sponsor. They must maintain a daily journal documenting their experiences and accomplishments. That journal is an opportunity for them to reflect on their experiences, and they're required to bring their journal to their meeting with their faculty mentor in order to open up lines of communication. Lastly, at the end of the program, they will create and deliver an oral presentation on the internship. So that will be comprised of a committee of administrators, teachers, classmates, even their mentors are invited, so they'll perform a 10- to 15-minute presentation with images, and it really gives you a nice, you know, picture of what that student was doing for the last five to six weeks. So last school year was the first school year that it was brought back. We had 27 participating seniors. As you can see on the board, there were internship sites in all areas of industry, including business, medical, education, technology, the arts, trades. As you can see, it was a very wide range of internship opportunities for students. I do have some images that both the students took while they were on their internships, as well as some pictures that they submitted during their presentation. So on the page here in the top left, you'll see two of our seniors from last school year with Assemblywoman Amy Paulin. They actually traveled up to Albany with her to see her in action. The top right is an image of the New York State Department of Transportation. One of our seniors was working on a bridge project in the city. Bottom left is one of our seniors at the William E. Cottles Elementary School in an education internship. I do want to give a shout out to our Cottle teachers for bringing our seniors in and completing the internship with them. And on the bottom right, we had a student with our athletic trainer here. She was learning some techniques as far as taping, other athletes' ankle support, so it was a great experience for her. Here on the next page, we have top left, a senior who completed an internship in the trade, so it was a totally wired electric in Tocco. That was one of his sites. Bottom left was Axiom Occupational Therapy and Physical Therapy. And on the right-hand side was actually a Facebook post that I came across of one of our seniors who participated with the Eastchester Volunteer Ambulance Company, and he actually became a driver of an ambulance. He participated in a multi-tiered course, and he still participates to this day when he's home from school with the evac. And in the last page here, top left, you'll see one of our interns, not pictured, but she attended with the Tocco Police Department a self-defense course that the officers were required to go to. Top right is the television studio at Eastchester High School. One of our students was preparing some films for students for their annual film festival. Bottom left is a student who assisted one of the technicians at the Tocco Animal Hospital with some X-rays. And the bottom right is one of our interns with the Westchester County Department of Transportation. All right? And then this school year, we had an overwhelming interest in the program. We have 60 participating seniors, which is the majority of the senior class. Roughly, as Mr. DeBellas mentioned, roughly half of our seniors, a little bit less than half, started today. The rest of our seniors will begin on staggered start dates based on AP exam schedules and other requirements they must complete. And our presentations, those seniors, will be out through June 12th, and June 13th through 15th will be their internship presentations. And, you know, today I got some feedback from our site sponsors, they're enjoying it. So I want to thank everyone for the program.
All right, I'm going to just run through Ms. Ornstein, the final presentation on the Habitat Humanity before we turn it over to Mr. Goldberg in athletics. What can I say, there's much, nothing nice than building a home for someone before you leave high school, and that's what the Habitat Humanity is all about. Here's a mission statement from the organization, but if you look at number three, it's to achieve the strangest of building independence for people. They need to be, build a better life for themselves and their families. So I'll ask Ms. Ornstein to come up. This is our largest extracurricular activity, and she'll take you through the program.
Okay. So we initiated in 2012, and I want to do a shout out to the PTA because they started this program for us. Mrs. Youshe helped get this going before we became an official club, and I was really, really proud of what our kids were able to do. Each year, we have about anywhere from 80 to 120 students involved in the club, anywhere from 50 to 80 different students sign up for bills at a time. We can only usually bring 15 to 20, so I have to work on Google Forms and create a term limiter so that as soon as a certain amount come on, I said, I'm sorry, the bill is filled. So we've, we've had to turn people away, unfortunately. Our outcomes are learning the value of service and teamwork. This is so important. They've worked alongside ConEd workers, Altis workers, Eastchester High School, other high schools, and as I say, they're seeing that they can do this as adults, and that's huge, that it's not just something they learn in high school and then they, they leave. In fact, many kids come back from college saying, I joined the Habitat Club in college. They're so excited, and more importantly, they have role models seeing them that they can do this as adults. It's not just something for high school. Applying academics to real-life programs, developing empathy for those less fortunate. One of the biggest things we always are working with is finding homeless veterans' houses, and you'll see some of the work that the kids have worked on. And as well, one of the projects, two years ago, we worked at our own Ecap program, and many of the kids didn't realize what Ecap does for our community. So it was really eye-opening on how amazing our own community is, and working within our own community was phenomenal. Again, building teamwork and camaraderie, and that's huge, and they love working together. I mean, it's, it's great to see. Communication, safety. Safety is always job one. Painting, gardening, building skills, we even learn a little bit on how to do things like that. Very little. Okay, some of the locations, we've worked at High Street for about five years. Ashburton, the Ycap, which is like our Eastchester Ecap program, Mount Vernon, we've worked in many different locations, a lot of gardening, making it beautiful. One of the big things that Jim likes to say is no more ugly, taking kind of ugly spaces and making them look beautiful, and you'll see some of the things we've done. We've worked in Nourishell in quite a few places, including their restore. We've taken trips to Breezy Point and worked after Hurricane Sandy. And then again, the Ecap in Tocco. As it says, the club consists of 84 students this year. We have at least five bills a year. We do some fundraising, but all our fundraising, 100% of the money goes, gets donated to Westchester Habitat Humanity. So we've made, we, we would bring, make shirts, the kids would design them, we'd get families to volunteer, we'd put their names on the back. We don't want to do anything that interferes with other GO activities as far as bake sales and car washes and such, so we try and do things a little bit different, and every dime all goes to Habitat Humanity. The club has been recognized as an Altis charity of champions, finalists for two years, and last year we won the grand champion, which means as a finalist, we get $1,000 donated to Habitat Humanity, and as a grand champion, we got another, another $2,000. So it was, it was pretty, it was pretty exciting. And again, this is for Westchester, Connecticut, Long Island, they had Texas in there. So just to be recognized as a finalist was pretty amazing. So this is one of our bills this year. This was our very first bill this year. We were in Mount Vernon, doing some gardening, making some places look pretty. This is our group, another group, this is with the Eastchester High School students. You can see the big bright green chair, so those are the shirts that we have used. Okay, we were painting in Nourishell, working right by Iona College. They have a housing area where they house, whenever they have college kids come up from different areas, like Westchester Habitat will have college students come in, and they need a place to stay, so we helped do the painting. This was in a VFW. Dr. Linehan joined us for this one. We do a lot of scraping and then painting, and as you can see, not easy work. They work really hard. That's our group then. Again, I try and do a lot of group shots. That's Jim in the middle with the hat, with his no more ugly hat. That was painting flower boxes, and again, doing some more scraping. This was our last bill. This was at Yonkers at Community Action, and the girls, they did the whole bulletin board, we did a lot of scraping and painting. You'll see, we work with other people in the community. Here is High Street, where we worked on a terracing of gardens. We literally get up there and do, get on scaffolding. Mrs. Coleman joined us for one of the bills. We, you know, teachers come and join us sometimes. We also go and do things throughout the county. This was a walk in Larchmont, where they walked around Manor Park, which was absolutely beautiful, and it was a real nice day, and again, we just walk for homes. Here again, we did, doing, Ms. Sarah O'Toole doing some drilling, making a major hole. That's working again throughout the, on High Street, inside the building, and I'm going to show you the, and baseball team comes and helps out. So again, it really brings so many different groups together. That was our walk last year, where we got our $1,000 big check from Altis. And again, on the left, working in Yonkers at Ycap, and on the right, you can see the scaffolding where they're learning to put a floor down, and there is the end result. That red building is the building that we've been working. We actually worked on all three buildings, the red, white, and blue. The red was the last one we built. We did a lot of the painting on the outside, we've worked on the inside. We started in the Blue House four years ago. So we've really worked on all three buildings. They are amazing, they love doing it. They, if we could have a bill every week, I could probably fill it, but I have a life and I need to do some other things, so it is a time commitment, but they love it. Thank you, and as I say, thank out the PTA for starting this.
Now, Mr. Goldberg, come up.
All right. Good evening. Quickly, I just want to mention that our varsity baseball team was successful at Boulder Stadium last night. It was a great venue, and one thing I really love about Tocco is when we're able to turn away games into home games. So I appreciate everyone that went out to the stadium. And our girls varsity softball team won in dramatic fashion tonight with a play at the plate, grave relay, and they won 7-6 on senior night. So I just wanted to give those two teams shout-outs. In our physical education class, Coach Sweeney has started our collaboratively, our fitness elective. Highlights, lifelong fitness, nutrition, yoga, stretching, and strength and conditioning for our students. Coach Calaswano in adaptive phys ed has implemented or carried on a new bowling unit initiative with equipment, I believe from the foundation. So thank you to the Tocco School Foundation. Unit highlights for our students, terminology, math, rules and implementation, and also, of course, camaraderie within the class. Health education, I think this is just your presentation, Coach. Our CPR, first aid and training, it adheres to state mandates, empathy for the medical field, and we believe that our students are better prepared for emergency situations, and that is done in Coach Calaswano's health education class. Also, in Coach Calaswano's health education class, drinking and driving and impairment awareness, and students experience tasks through visual impairment goggles for substance, to simulate substance abuse. It's an interactive and innovative way to teach and learn about the important topics and raise awareness to prevent injuries. Our athletes reading to Cubs, we've expanded in the elementary school to second and third grade this year, and I just wanted to say thank you to all the teachers that allow our high school athletes to read to their students, and Ms. Elsavio coordinates at the elementary school level. Partnered with PTA for our drug awareness with Mike Leahern, the presentation highlights negative effects of drug use in athletics and college, and also what recovery looks like and where to get help. Our school, our school nurse, we have a new high school nurse this year, Ms. Moorehan, and Ms. Notaro at the elementary school. I think we've done a really good job communicating, communicable illness to our community with, with our blackboard connects through, for each grade level. We've updated our website with forums, facts, and questions and answers on the school website. We had an MLB agent come and talk about choosing the right college and how athletics plays a role in choosing that right college. And the most important part of that presentation, when he talks about the scholarship, he really emphasized that money's money, and there's more money with your grades than there is with athletics. The Tocco varsity softball and baseball team promoted autism awareness. If you could see from home, we, we added light-up blue and we wore blue socks on April 20th. The varsity football team won the sportsmanship award for section one. This wasn't just Class D sportsmanship award, this was for every fall male sport and going against all teams in Rockland, Putnam, and Westchester. Our varsity athletes honored our veterans. Ed Calderon, happy retirement, Ed, and Mariella Ferguson received letters from our varsity athletes on Veterans Day this year. We did a couple of philanthropy walks. The past two years, we've been in Manhattanville for breast cancer awareness, and our football team went and did a juvenile diabetes awareness walk as well. We had senior signing day last week. We had six student athletes that will be going on and playing at the college level. Thank you to all the staff, administrators, board members that were able to attend, and of course, good luck to all those playing at the next level. Jessica Berger won the top athletic award for our, for our county. She was interviewed on Peak Radio and was viewed in the Journal News. And the ConEd Scholar Athlete Award is for an athlete, a varsity athlete from, that excels in the classroom and of course, on the field and everything along with that. So congratulations to Jessica. Last, may the fourth be with you. Last Friday, we had a pajama drive. Hundreds of pajamas will be donated to the Children's Hospital. I believe we have eight to 10 large garbage bags filled to the top, and a special thank you to students, teachers, and staff and the community for getting behind this initiative. And last, Maxwell Pierce is a Tocco graduate. He was the first, first Tocco graduate to enter the slam dunk contest for the NCAA. He was the first Division III athlete to compete in the NCAA dunk contest. And a lot of it had to do with our community. We sent out messages to the staff, to the students, to, to vote. There was about five levels of voting, so it was like every Friday, we, we said, vote for Max, vote for Max, and he kept winning by a marginal 51%. And so we actually got him to go to San Antonio and compete in the slam dunk contest, and I'd like to show you a, a video of Tocco wishing him luck and followed by what he did at the slam dunk contest. Uh-oh. I'll try it again. All right. Uh-oh, I'll try it again. All right.
Good luck, Max, bring it home. Looked up. Hi, Max, congratulations, we're all proud of you, good luck in San Antonio, and do your best, we're sure you're gonna be great, good luck.
Good luck, Max, everybody.
Good luck, Max, out there in San Antonio.
God, it's Max.
Good luck, Max.
Good luck, Max, go get 'em.
Hey, what's up, Max, good luck in your slam dunk contest, I know you made it up to the top, you know, you're one of our role models, because I like basketball, you know, my cousin Jason, you know, and I just wanted to congratulate you, you know.
Good luck, Max.
Hey, Max, do us proud, Tuckahoe's cheering for you all the way.
We're behind you the whole, throughout the whole process, we got everyone to vote, we're so excited for you, it's an amazing, amazing opportunity to be on ESPN.
Good luck, Tuckahoe.
Good luck, Max.
Good luck, Max.
Max, Joel.
You know what?
Good luck in San Antonio.
How's it, Max, congrats on the slam dunk contest, man, we're rooting for you here at Tuckahoe.
Good luck in San Antonio, Max.
Hey, Max, good luck, man, I hear you're doing good things, I can't wait, I hope you win it all, man.
Good luck, Max, in San Antonio.
Max, it's Mr. Albado, we're all rooting for you in San Antonio, I see your grandmother all, all the time in the village, she's so proud of you, and the entire district is proud of you, all the best.
Oh, God, you met him at Rucker Park when he was a little kid?
Oh, that's him, that's him.
Smart, smart.
He told me that, well, Albado, he needs something good here, though, he needs something great, yeah.
Contortionist, Max Pierce, oh, he hit it on the backboard as he, he hit his head on the backboard. What I liked, though, is how he contorted his body, 'cause this had to be quick, that ball was beyond the basket, and he brought it back towards the basket, because the degree of difficulty on that is high.
What's he doing?
Oh, no, oh, no.
Ball in the left hand, ball above the rim, head above the rim.
The ball in the front and the finish.
So, I will tell you, Max was very appreciative and, and pretty emotional when, when he received the video, and he, I believe he came in second, he got yipped a little bit, but that's neither here nor there, but, um, he's, he's about six, six, six-one?
Maybe six-one.
Yeah, with, with tissues in his shoes, maybe six-one.
Means I have a chance.
Yes. And that, that concludes, so I appreciate everyone's time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all for that, if anyone who has middle schoolers or high schoolers, when you're, you ask your kids, "What'd you do today in school?" and they say, "Nothing," you now know it's not true, right? Because that's what they tell us when, when they come home, so, thank you, it was great, really, really so appreciate the presentations, so excited for the things we're doing here, both academically and the extracurriculars, I really think this is a great showing of what we're about, and, and all the hard work that our teachers and our administrators are putting in to the education of our students every day. Just to add to that, last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, and again, I extend on behalf of the board, our appreciation to all that our teachers and our staff do for our students every day. It, it doesn't go unnoticed, and I think this was just such a wonderful sampling of what's happening in our classrooms every day. It really is a look inside the classroom and into our student life here at Tuckahoe, and I think it's something we need to do more of, because I really think our community needs to see it, and, and the good work that's being done here. And I thank you, I thank you all, and if any other board members have anything they'd like to add.
Yeah, no, I would have to agree with Michelle, I mean, it absolutely probably is our most favorite thing to see, like all the things that are happening in the classrooms, and like Michelle said, we love to see it, and would love to see more, and I'm sure the community does, I mean, we appreciate it so much to really see what's going on in the classrooms. Great job.
I think it was fantastic. I really enjoyed that, that's probably the most enjoyable board meeting.
Yes, I have to say.
I really enjoyed that, that was really, really good. Can I actually ask you a couple questions, is that all right?
Absolutely.
Um, with the internship, so just so I understand, they're pulled out at normal school hours for, for that internship, it's during the school day, correct? Okay, it's for about four or five weeks, I guess it is, right? And how do they get there, is it transportation provided, or they get there on, on their own, how does that work?
You come up to the mic.
So, on their application, they have to indicate whether they have transportation or not, and based on that answer, I find internships, you know, either in the village and the community, or I can stand a little bit outside if they have their own transportation, so they have to provide their own.
Do, do we provide any type of internship placement during the summertime? Do we do that at all, like maybe between junior year and senior year, is that something that we do?
I know, I know some of our senior interns, such as last year, stayed on in their internship.
Were hired, correct.
Whether they, you know, the employer paid them, or they just stayed on as a volunteer, but that's what we.
I was just wondering, I know it's legitimately probably difficult, but what a great thing to have on a college resume, if you had an internship in the summer before your senior year when you're applying for college.
We advertise summer jobs, internships, anything that, you know, when they call us or send us emails, we'll put in the guidance office and make them available, and also, a lot of students, you know, go to enrichment programs over the summer, and if we're aware, then we let the students know.
Okay, so there is opportunities, yeah, definitely, okay, good.
Wait, I had a question too about the flipped classroom, so it's, is it just two classrooms that are doing it, and is there gonna be looked at to expand it, like is it working, I guess?
Right now, as soon as the math department is, is in the lead on this, you know, it's by really osmosis, and, you know, I think, you know, some of the technology is specific to certain curriculum areas, I mean, you know, we all know we had math homework, and when you get to the problem that you ask your mother for help, and mom doesn't know, and what do you do, you get to school early the next day, and try and get some help from a peer student, so that's what this really does, I mean, English and social studies, you know, the content is in, in the textbook or in the novel, so, you know, you have a more advantage, math, if you don't get it, you don't get it, you're gonna need, you know.
Genie Allen does it all the time.
Genie Allen does it, so yeah, it's, I think it's growing, you know, it depends on the situation.
But it's also not something we want everyone doing, because then your poor child will be watching seven videos. Right, true.
How long have we been doing the visual literacy for, is that, is that brand new? Now, I just wanted to ask something about that, and don't take this the wrong way, 'cause I think it's great, to me, it makes total sense, but I'm not an educator, so I'm just asking, I'm just wondering, is this a controversial thing, I mean, are there some folks out there in the education community that don't think this is a good thing to do visual literacy, in a sense that it's sort of replacing the traditional concept of using your imagination to, to read and write, I'm not saying that I believe that, I'm just asking.
No, on the contrary, it's, it's supporting, you know, the written text, I mean, you know, when I, in Kristen's class, like last, was it last year, I believe, I stopped in, and she had me do Romeo and Juliet, and, you know, basically, they were looking at the, the text of Romeo and Juliet, and she had the movie, the nineteen nineties version, and she was really taking them through, you know, five minutes of, of the video, and then, and then looking at the written text, and asking them to compare and contrast, and I will tell you, there was twenty-five kids in the class, and twenty-four hands were raised, I, it was amazing, and, and then following up on that, then she said, "Well, what happens if, if the Shakespearean actors were in it?" You know, it was about mood and setting, and that's what Kate.
Elements of it.
The elements, so, so you know, and also, I think it's important for students in the twenty-first century to know when they're being manipulated, you know, and when you go to the movies, and you are being manipulated by a close shot, you know, and your emotions are different, and that's what, what the ladies were presenting here, or a wide shot, you know, and, and, you know, and to Kate's point on the music and jaws, everybody got nervous when they heard the music, you didn't have to see the shark, so, you know, that's really what it's about, but our students, we want them to be aware of what's going on, whether it's on Facebook, whether it's in the cinema, so, it really does supplement, and she brings it in with her, they're more excited about the written text now with the visual medium.
So, you definitely see that it's working, whatever they do, yeah, great, okay.
If I may, I just, I thank you all for, for coming tonight, and as, I think, I echo the same sentiments, we talk about this often, I, I, as a parent and board member, and I'd love to talk about the great things that, that are happening here, and a night like tonight, I would love to see even more frequently, like I think it's a benefit for you, it's great for us, it's fantastic for the kids, and I applaud you for your efforts and your time to, to kinda bring us to the next level. We've talked about it, and we've always said, even with the Capital Project, we want to be better, we don't want to stay as, we always want to continue to move forward, advance the ball forward, and tonight's demonstration and what you showed, I think, is the step in that direction, so, I, I would love to see anyone here more frequently, I'd love to see students come back and share their experience, maybe after the internships are over, maybe in June, we could have one of them come back and tell us what that experience was like, I mean, this is great stuff, I mean, and I applaud you for your efforts, and thank you.
Thanks for taking time tonight to stay here with us.
Yes.
Yeah, and if I could just, just say in, in closing, that, again, a, a big thank you to everyone, you know, as a board, and, and as your superintendent, we, we did get, and I'll include Ms. Lou in this, you know, we, everyone up here got consumed by our Capital Project planning, and then, and then the bond that we recently passed, and we, I, I think we all feel we got away a little bit from, from the, the most basic thing that we're all here for, and that is education and our students, and, and I will leave you with this, you know, I've been meeting with each and every senior in the district prior to graduation, just trying to understand how their experience was, what maybe we could potentially do better, and, and what worked for them, and I'll be making a presentation in June, but I'll give you a little, a little preview of what they said over and over and over, and that is recognizing the quality of teaching and their teachers, and that just kept coming up with different groups of students, they so appreciate the teaching in this district, and, and it was, for me, it was just so refreshing to hear that from them, that they recognize your efforts, and I think tonight is a perfect example, and you gave us a glimpse inside your, your classroom and your programs, and then also, for Mr. Calaswano, Ms. Orinstein, going beyond the classrooms, and, and their education doesn't stop with academics, but it's this idea of, of the value of community service and giving back to this community and other communities, and, and I just applaud each and every one of you, and none of it is possible without administrative support, and our admin team here tonight, again, I thank you, because I know you are behind these initiatives, supporting the teachers, and helping them implement what, what they're doing so well. So, again, thank you, I know it's a late night, and I know you have to get up early, we really appreciate you coming in this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I, we do have to adjourn, right, because that was a regular meeting, or?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so that's it for tonight, thank you again, thank you for coming, for those who watch at home, and we thank you, thank you. Motion to adjourn. Pete second, Cynthia, all in favor?